Like to call it to order, the Tuesday, June 3rd, planning and zoning, mayor planning and zoning. First step would be to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion. Second.
Motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All any dissenters say nay. Right, is approved. Approval of the minutes from the May 6th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second been made. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. Right, first order of business, site plan review for Mayor Lutheran High School Classroom Edition at 306 Seventh Street Northeast in the Public Institutional District. Do you want to get that started, Jack?
I can do a quick overview of what we have proposed here. So, uh, what we have before United is a site plan review. Um, a site plan is a review where it's a permitted use. And we kind of go through it. There's no public hearing required, but we view it the planning commission who makes a recommendation of the city council for final approval. And what the site plan is for is a classroom addition, specifically science classroom addition to the Mayor Lutheran High School. Um, this structure has had some additions in the past. Uh, I think it was about eight or 10 years ago. There's a field house. There was a parking lot expansion. Now they have the classroom expansion. Uh, the property itself is zone public institutional from a zoning standpoint. And it's guided for a public quasi-public in the future land use map. So this use does comply with that. Um, all the setbacks, lot coverage and those items will be met. There is no, you know, zoning things that aren't being met from that standpoint. Um, the billing itself, uh, the additional will be approximately 9,800 square feet. And this goes back to total square footage of 100,977 square feet. And that does not include the previous field house addition. So there's fairly good sized structure there. Um, property size of the acreage is 19.73 acres. And there's another parcel that is 5.72 acres to the east of that, which contains part of the track area and field areas. And I think there's like a uh, storage shed out and kind of very eastern end there. So a total of 25.45 acres altogether. Um, uh, adjacent uses are, you know, things in the area. Uh, there's low density residential to the south and east. Um, single family dwellings in that case, uh, to the north is, uh, property owned by the school as well. It's basically vacant at this point. And there's commercial businesses across trunk highway 25, kind of the northwest. And to the west, there's single family detached dwellings and also zone commercial low density residential. So similar uses in the area to the north, which will, you know, school property and then single family kind of surrounding that. The, um, additional, um, square footage would require additional off-street parking. Uh, going through the previous, uh, off-street parking expansion, there was additional stalls that were put in at that point. I think it was 298. Uh, there's a total of 271 spaces that are needed. So there's still additional parking there. Um, so there's no issue with the off-street parking. Nothing has to be changed from that end. Uh, billing design standards, uh, you know, this would obviously have to meet, you know, that criteria from what's in the zoning ordinance, which isn't too restrictive. But the billing, uh, what's being proposed and designed will, you know, meet those standards will be consistent with the rest of the structure. So no major issues from that standpoint. Um, landscaping, uh, there are some landscaping requirements to be followed. They do have a landscaping plan that was submitted. And it's basically called the finishing plan and the plan set. And there's some, uh, trees at Two Prairie Statesman, Swiss Stone Pine and One American Century Linden. Uh, there's also a total of like 104 evergreen shubs to be planted in the courtyard. And if you're familiar with this, this, uh, addition will kind of enclose the center part of the building. Uh, you can kind of see there's a long narrow point there and the addition will kind of be kind of southwest of that connecting where that sidewalk area is. So, um, yeah, so basically it'll connect this and you'll have a courtyard there. And that'll have this landscaping, uh, area where all these, uh, evergreen shubs will be planted. Um, street access, there's no additional street access required with this. Um, you know, all the utility water and sewer connections will be reviewed by the city engineer. As well, the, uh, surface water management stuff, that's kind of the stormwater, uh, thing. There's a bio retention basin being proposed that has been reviewed. There is comments that I'll address here in a second. Uh, they come in a memo dated, uh, May 21st, 2005. It had, uh, basically four fairly general comments. Um, so any work, I think there was a connection to a storm sewer manhole in trunk highway 25. It need to be some sort of traffic control plan to make sure that that's not affecting traffic going through there. But those conditions will need to be met as a condition of approval of any site plan review. Uh, plans were submitted to MINDOT. I don't expect any major issue there. Uh, since really all we're doing is connecting that storm sewer. So any permit in the MINDOT right away, or any work, I should say, we'll need a permit. That's being done in that right away. Uh, we have not received any comments back from MINDOT at this point, but the plans were submitted to them. Uh, any signage that's being proposed would have to meet the signage sections of the zoning ordinance. And then the miscellaneous stuff, you know, regarding glare and lighting and all that sort of stuff would be met as well. Um, if, uh, the planning commission, uh, recommends approval, there's 11 conditions listed in the report, um, fairly standard stuff regarding building design, landscaping, uh, lot coverage, vegetation establishment. Um, signage, lighting, noise and vibration, the engineering comments from that memo from May 21st need to be satisfied. A building permit would be acquired before construction could begin. Uh, the billing design standards shall meet the zoning ordinance requirements and the MINDOT right away. Our review, if they have anything, you know, comments that have to be addressed as well. So with that, I can take any questions and obviously the, uh, applicants are here in the audience as well. And it's not a public hearing, but we can discuss and go from there. So.
Do you want to say anything on top of that or just go ahead with?
Pretty comprehensive.
Yeah, that sounded pretty thorough.
Make sure it's all squared away. So, yeah.
And it's, uh, Joel Lance, by the way, is actually the director of the scale shooting, who is our, uh, construction manager for the project. That's all I have. I mean, he covered everything quite well. I, I will as soon as we're able to get all of our, uh, documentation taken care of and all of the permissions taken care of, we're ready to build. So we're, you know, famous last words, but theoretically, uh, but I can go before slide first.
So you're waiting on us. Okay.
I, I wouldn't say it that way. We're encouraging.
Anyone have any?
Not really.
Questions. I feel if they, as, as you said, meet all the, uh, ordinances and stuff, I don't see why we wouldn't recommend to move forward.
Yeah, this is about the most straightforward, anything I've seen come across planning and zoning before. Everything's just already compliant. So do we have any motion?
I'll motion.
To make motion one in particular or?
To approve the site, to approve the site plan for Mayor Lutheran High School Classroom Edition at 306 Seventh Street Northeast.
I'll second that.
Excellent. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any dissent? Motion passes.
That'll go to council next week, final approval.
I don't see that passing.
Just clarification on a couple of things. Yeah, that's got to address. I was in fact, just came back from the watershed, just running. It was an explanation of what type of equipment we were getting used to sell to top soil. Now, what we were getting, how we were going to treat the top soil. What a plan was for replacing the top soil. It was just very complex.
Yeah.
They told me they're addressing it.
Different cases of top soil.
Everybody's been like, uh.
Really?
Probably the smallest plan review letter I ever saw come back. Well, only three items are. They were pretty quick explanations, explanations.
Yeah, make sure you check with MINDOT on their permit as well for that connection store. So what color is it?
That was, but they've got the plans.
They've got the plans, but, uh, there was that, uh, comment letter from the city engineer. I don't know if you've seen that yet or not. Yeah. So it was from May 21st and one of the comments was to get a permit from MINDOT, which, cause you gotta do work in there right away. Um, yeah, I'll email, get this out to everybody. Basically it just says it's pretty straightforward stuff too. So nothing, it's only four comments. So.
Send it over.
Yep. All right.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you for coming out. Next word. We like the short and sweet.
I was gonna say, you guys should be at our school board meetings.
Next on the agenda, we have zoning ordinance update discussion regarding the performance standard section.
All right, let me just write something down quick and we'll get going on this too. All right. So what we have here tonight is the performance standard section. If you remember at the last meeting, kind of went through the title and application, the administration enforcement sections. And this section here, once again, there's not a lot of, you know, it's pretty straightforward stuff. Uh, next month or the next two months, we'll be looking at the general regulations. You can kind of see some of the items. And there's more to that. That's just cuts off. There's another page with additional items. And that's where we'll have discussions, you know, probably more detailed on, you know, some tree preservation or all these other things we've talked about, you know, over the last, you know, a couple of years. Um, storage containers, whatever. We'll just kind of split that section into two different meetings because there's a lot there. And it just depends how much you guys want to discuss. But for tonight, kind of go through this performance standard section. Um, it's not a lot of pages, but you know, there's some things in there. Uh, once again, the stuff that's underlined is kind of new text and some of this is being moved around in the ordinance itself. So it may already be in there. We're just kind of moving it to a new section and kind of getting everything in a more, you know, you know, sing, sing and spread out all over in the wrong sections. We're trying to get all that together. Stuff that's being crossed out is, is being, um, removed. In some cases, and I'll touch on this, it's being crossed out, but it's being moved to a different section too. And then just the stuff with regular text, that's stuff that's existing that we're not, we're not adjusting. But to start with, it's, it's performance standards, uh, purpose, I guess. And it's to establish general development performance standards. These standards are intended and designed to assure compatibility of uses, to prevent urban blight, deterioration and decay, and to enhance the health, safety and general welfare of the residents of the community. Uh, the first one is a dwelling unit restriction. And this is stuff that's currently in there. Uh, but we're kind of adjusting the language a little bit. And basically what this is saying is no garage tent accessory building motor home shall be used as living corners temporary or permanently. You know, tents, playhouses or similar structures may be used for player recreational purposes. And basements and cellar may be used as living, uh, rooms, uh, living quarters and rooms as a portion of the principal residential dwelling. So basically just kind of some standard language. Uh, the next one is the single family dwelling requirements. Oh, sorry.
Um, so B on that, what you just said, basements?
Yep.
Would they have anything as far as fire egress windows or anything like?
Well, they'd have to meet building code requirements. So if you have, um, a basement as living quarters, it has to have the egress window or you know, or whatever the standards are. Yeah. And that, you know, we don't need to put all those details in the zoning ordinance because that's addressed through the building code and it's actually the overall city code, but it does allow, you know, basements to be used for that as long as it meets code requirement. Uh, the next one's a single family dwelling requirements. And, uh, basically it has some stuff regarding the single family dwellings, um, detached dwellings, I should say. And I did put in there, except for approved manufactured home parks. They have a little bit different standards, you know, when it comes to code stuff. But you know, just kind of going through this, we got the state building code. You know, it needs to be on a continuous perimeter foundation that meets the state building code. So you can't have, um, you know, stuff on stilts or things like that. It's got to be that perimeter foundation. Um, measurements should not be less than 30 feet in width, uh, length and 24 feet in width over the entire length. Uh, you know, we did have it previously as 24. We didn't have the length in there. Um, with measurement shall take into account overhangs or shall not take into account overhangs. And the projections beyond the principal walls, uh, roof have, uh, have an earth covered composition metal shingle or tiled roof. Uh, has to receive a building permit and it shall be in, uh, in addition to other information required. You know, indicate the size, height, design, appearance, all the sort of stuff you'd normally see on a typical building permit with the plans and things like that. Uh, may not be in sole, uh, variance with other stuff in the area. You know, you want to keep things fairly consistent, uh, um, help keep, uh, property values up. And then meets the standard, uh, requirements of the state building code. So, and that's where we have that and, you know, referenced in other sections of the city code. So and you can kind of see some of the items that were down there. The one item I did take out was a minimum roof pitch of 312. There's quite a few roofs out there with these flat roof designs that you're seeing now. That's fairly common. It's becoming kind of a more style. Some of those roofs would not, you know, those houses would not fit under 312 building codes. So, um, that's kind of gone away from a standard standpoint. You don't see them, uh, you know, tons of them, but there are some designs out there, you know, sometimes they have one like this way and one like that way. Um, some of them are more flat and so. All right, um, temporary dwellings, that one's kind of being removed at this point, uh, and put into different section. Uh, we got, uh, planted and unplanted property. And just so you know, we have some areas in here like where it says section and it's kind of got a blank. That'll reference the actual section and we just don't have those section numbers finalized yet in the future parts of the code. So those blanks will be filled in once this whole thing gets done. But basically what we're dealing is any person, uh, desiring to improve property shall submit a billing official, a survey of said premises and information on the location and dimensions. Existing proposed buildings, location of easements, crossing the property encroachments, all that sort of stuff. So basically, you know, a survey needs to be submitted with your billing permit, which is basically the, the standard that's being done right now. Um, you know, in some cases we have fences and things like that, or detached shed that it's in the middle of a backyard 50 feet from any property line. Those are pretty straightforward. You know, if we got a lot of coverage issue, that's very close. We may require the survey then. But as long as we know that there got plenty of room on the setbacks, no issue with lot coverage. You know, some of that's been kind of just hand drawn in on previous surveys. We're not getting, you know, forcing the update to, you know, help them save a little money, things like that. Um, they shall be placed so not to obstruct pu- future streets. So if you've got a 10 acre property and there's a street stub right into that, you don't want to put a house right where that future street will extend. So we do have the ability to kind of address that if that comes up. Um, except in a PUD, um, or is allowed in the respective zoning district, not more than one principal building shall be located on the lot. That's pretty standard stuff there. You know, a lot of times you might see an industrial district, a couple of different buildings going on a lot, you know, storage, things like that. Uh, on a through lot, both street lines shall be considered a front line when applying for yard setbacks. So if you have a lot that fronts a local street and backs up to another street, there's a few of them out there, but not many, you know, within the city. Um, so we got some language in there about the setback stuff. Same with the corner lot. You know, the side yard of a corner was kind of considered a front yard as well. Um, the case of properties which abut street easements, uh, applicable setbacks shall be measured from the easement line. So this is where, uh, you have property where the, the roadway itself is not platted right away. All these newer subdivisions, it's planted right away. But if you have an old meets and bounds description, where's the setback? Go the property line actually may go to the center line of the road. So you can't base it off that. You base it off where that easement boundary is. And that becomes, you know, the actual setback from that location. So, so we just got that addressed in there. Um, outlots are deemed unbuildable with no building permit shall be issued for such properties, except in the case of public park facilities and essential services. And essential services are like, um, you know, electrical, you know, boxes, different things like that, you know, deal with cable, gas, all that sort of stuff. And typically outlots are plotted as outlots for future development. And for them to be built on, and we've had this come up in, um, uh, Fieldstone on the cinnamon point there, there was two outlots that were little triangle remnant parcels. The original developer wanted to eventually include them with property to the north. That never happened. And over time, he ended up selling both those outlots to neighboring houses that were platted. But one of the houses came in and wanted to build on that lot or one of the owners, I should say. And they wanted to be able to extend the line. Well, to do that, we had to plat, replat that outlot and that lot into a new plat. And that allowed them to build out in that little area and give them more yard space. So in that case, they were like, why can't we just build on the outlot? Well, it was unbuildable. You know, this is the language that kind of addresses that. So, um, because a lot of times those outlots have drained utility easements over them. They need to be vacated and things like that. Um, letter G is lot frontage and access. Uh, each lot shall have frontage on an abutting improved and city accepted public street in compliance with the minimum lot width requirements of the respective zoning district. So this is where it has to have that, you know, frontage onto a public lot. It doesn't allow you to, you know, give easements over neighboring properties and things of that nature. So.
In older zoning code language, would this be referred to as ingress and egress?
Yeah, ingress and egress. So, you know, like I said, that's where you may have an easement in ingress and egress easement over a property. And the lots landlocked behind there and they would get back to it by crossing a property. In this case, it's basically saying that any new lot has to have that required public frontage. Now, there is a situation where you maybe go through a planning or development and you have, you know, private streets and things like that, that could be addressed. So it's not technically an approved, um, public street, but it's through a private street through a planning development approval, you know, that sort of, you know, situation is allowed as well. So. Um, so that's just some of the requirements on lots and things like that. The next one is kind of erosion and drainage. And, um, basically this kind of is, is a bunch of new language. Previously we literally had like one sentence regarding this. And one of the biggest things in today's world, when it comes to new developments is stormwater and erosion drainage, things of that nature. Obviously the Carver County Watershed Management Organization reviews all your plats and developments and site plans, things like that. And they actually issue permits for, for that stormwater. So this kind of gives some ability for the city to, uh, review things to meet certain standards. Um, under C, under standards, for instance, is the NPDES general construction permit. That's issued through the, uh, Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. And what this is, is for any construction that's over an acre in size. And NPDS stands for National Pollution Discharge. Uh, I think it's Elimination System. And what that means is it's, it's the out there to manage the stormwater until you get vegetation established, whether that be seed, sod and the seed grows in. I think you gotta have like 90% of the ground to be, you know, vegetated and you can get that, you know, released. And ultimately in like developments like Coldwater Crossing, Eighth Edition, what, uh, if they do it the way, you know, in what that case is one builder, one developer. But if you, if it's sold to multiple builders, they can transfer each lot into the builder's name. That builder can release each permit as they finish their houses. Uh, the developer can't release the overall permit until 90% of the houses are sodded. So that's a way to track that and to give leverage back to the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. You know, if there's a major stormwater issue where else you got runoff going into, you know, the river out there and it just, you know, sediment going all over the place. Um, typically the MPCA doesn't get too involved in this, but they have the right to come out and inspect at any time. And coming to mayor is probably not too realistic, but the more developing communities, you know, they typically will make a trip or two here in the summer. Just to make sure they go through a few projects and make their things are for the most part, um, out there. But cities also review that stuff and it's kind of the city's goal is to, you know, stick, you know, get the things to the point where there's not an issue when the MPCA gets involved. And, you know, for the most part in mayor, we've never had any, you know, too big of issues on anything. That's been, um, something to deal with. So, um, as we go through this, you know, basically talks about like you get city engineer approval. Um, so they, they have that prior to lease of any grading security. And this kind of has to deal with, um, uh, you know, the, like a development where they'd have a letter of credit or, you know, whatever. Uh, as built for temporary survey shall be submitted to verify the as built. Um, you know, I, I gotta verify with, with, uh, you know, Bob or Dave Martini, the engineer, what they've been doing right now. But that's something that we know if they grade a site, if we get that as built survey, we know the grades are there. So four years down the road, if a builder comes in and builds something, he says, oh, I'm three feet off. What goes on? We can go back to that as built survey and say, this was the grade when they got it accepted. What happened between then and now? It's either you or somebody else did something. So it kind of allows the city to have, you know, an assurance and who is doing what out there. Um, approval of erosion control measures, the city engineer as part of any grading plan review has the ability to add silt fence, you know, you know, say we can do this, we can do that. Or just the ability in general to kind of onsite, you know, if also we got some runoff going in one area, we didn't expect to throw some silt log or whatever up to try to fix something. Um, so it kind of gives a city engineer that ability to kind of do some of that stuff, which is, should be in their hands to have that discretion. Uh, storm sewer inlets, um, just make sure they're functioning and draining. A lot of times when you have development in new streets, they'll put what they call like a, a sump basket or a catch basin basket in there. And that allows when the water to come in, it catches the sediment until, you know, we get vegetation established in the neighborhood. And then that sediment doesn't get into the storm sewer system or into the ponding because all these ponds long-term do need to be cleaned out and there, there's an expense to that. And it's not an easy process. A lot of times you have trees and little stuff brush growing up along the edges. You gotta clear that. So this just helps limit that. Um, sediment control practices, you know, these are things that, you know, do you do downstream? Tracking, this is where you have a rock entrance in front of your garage or whatever that has the big rock. So it doesn't allow sediment to be tracked out. It's not a perfect situation, but does help the situation. Uh, seeding, if it's left inactive seven days shall be seeded or stabilized. Um, removal, all temporary erosion control dices, you know, hay bales, whatever. Should be moved, um, and it must be within 30 days of establishment of permanent vegetation. So we, you know, sometimes you see somebody's been living in a house for five years and in the backyard, they still got the silt fence all, you know, falling down and looking like crap. That should be removed. This just gives the ability to city to say, hey, you know, clean up your silt fence or clean up this or whatever, just so it doesn't get stuck there, you know, long term. Uh, site de-watering, this is, you know, where they gotta go down to the ground. They're putting in sanitary sewer and you had groundwater. Um, you may have to pump that groundwater out. You have to have a plan to where that's going to go. You also need a DNR permit to do that. I think that permit takes about 30 days for the DNR to get. So, you know, it doesn't happen in every project, but it gives us the ability to monitor that and regulate that if need be. Uh, waste of material disposal, um, just gives the city to, you know, make sure you clean up all the garbage and debris on lots. Um, foundation garage floor shall be 18 inches above the crown of the street. And then it gives the city administrator or city engineer the ability to issue a stop work order if they are in continued violation. Yes.
I brought that up like 15 to 20 years ago. And Rod said, well, there's some places where a driveway will go down and into a place.
Yep, that is correct.
So is that something that the, um, engineers will look at if there's something like that?
Yep. And it does say unless approved by the city.
But I mean, that's what that's for. Yeah. Cause I was picturing everything, you know, should be like street cut slow for the water. But anyways, up by, uh, but I, yeah. Ridge Road, like around the corner, then it kind of goes down the hill by Drew's or whatever. But so there is instances that will be covered. Okay.
Yep. And, and there are situations where you just have an existing house and as the road gets built, there's just no way to make that work. So you have, and the key, the reason why you want them up there is so water gets away from the house. So houses don't have water coming into the basement.
No, I get it. So is this, was this anywhere else or is that new to?
Um, I can't remember if that was in there previous. I gotta double check. I, I, I can't remember if I moved that from somewhere else or not, but I do think it was in there somewhere. I just don't remember where.
That's fine.
And that's part of what, you know, a lot of this is getting moved around. So it's, I just, you know, it might be there, but it just being moved or the wording got adjusted a little.
I think we did something, that was like, must've did something in the middle of that.
Yeah. Cause okay, one thing I noticed in the code, a lot of the wording is, you know, it's probably 20, 30 years old, some of this. And it's out of date with kind of today's practices. So the intent is there, but the wording isn't necessarily correct. So we need to update the wording kind of today's practices and how stuff is done. So, um, but yeah, I know you can see that last sentence there was crossed out. That's really what we had before. You know, where it, yeah, it says some things, but just doesn't have the detail that you deal with in today's world. So, um, exterior lighting, um, that's the next section here. This talks about, you know, you know, the foot candle or light candles, I believe it is, or foot candles or what they call it. Um, you know, so if you've got, for instance, the, the Dollar General market or wherever they got building. You know, if they have a light that's out there and it's shining bright right on them neighboring houses across the street. You know, we have lighting or this language here will basically address that. And there's lighting plans that, you know, they can put together that shows how this all, you know, will illuminate the area and the property itself. And has, uh, requirements in there about what, how much can shine off the property, how much has to stay on the property. Um, to be able to direct the lighting downward versus up into the sky. So you don't have the air, uh, light pollution at nighttime, uh, different things like that. A lot of this comes into play in the commercial, you know, industrial, even like the Mayor Lutheran School. You know, if they have lighting on the side of the building, that stuff can be addressed there. Um, let's see here. So basically I don't know if I need to go through all the details on this, but it just has some general, um, wording on, you know, different things, different setbacks. Uh, the C2 central business district, um, it does have some exemptions in there because obviously you got property lines right up to the right of way. So when you have buildings right at the property line, you can't have setbacks like you have in other districts. So like at the bottom of the page, what is it? It says 47 on my thing, but that's 47 from the zoning ordinance. Um, that's where letter D, it talks about that. Um, you know, temporary outdoor lighting used during customary holiday seasons or civic celebrations. You know, so if you've got lighting that's set up for, you know, some event or something that may be brighter than that, that's a temporary situation. That sort of thing is exempt from it. Um, Christmas lights, uh, would be exempt. It talks about airplane stuff, which really probably doesn't affect anything here. Security lighting, emergency lighting by police, fire, other rescue authorities. Uh, illumination of, uh, US or Minnesota flags, public parks, trails and recreational facilities. So there's some things that we do exempt out of that. And then, uh, prohibitions or laser strobe or flashing lights, um, you know, those are being prohibited. Uh, the next section smoke, yeah.
For the first part on intention, 115 foot candles. That seems awkward, right?
Yeah. So it shall not exceed that, um, above or at ground level measured at any point on the property. So, um, I mean, if we want to adjust that, that's, we can.
Yeah.
I'm, I'll be honest, some of this language comes from a different ordinance, from a different city.
Yeah.
So it's, not every city is the same. Everyone's got a little bit different take on things. So it's, if you see something in there, you feel like we need to adjust, that can be discussed.
Yeah. I did want to make a note that like 115 seems like a lot. Like this room is probably 70 to 80 foot candles sitting here. And it's not a linear, so foot candles aren't a linear, linear. So if you double it, it's not double the brightness. It's about, it's a logarithmic. to logarithmic scale. So if you're double the foot candles, it's maybe one and a half the brightness on a scale. So.
I guess my question is, cause I know I wanted to have them look at the erosion drainage section, the city engineer. Maybe we just run that by him and see if they got a recommendation.
Yeah.
I mean, that's.
I don't have a number in my head. I just know one fifteen something. Seems like a lot. That's right.
I've never heard of that term. Oh, is it candle powers, which is a bulb?
Kind of the same thing.
Yeah.
Usually lumens.
Lumens or conversions for all that.
Yeah. So I'll run that by, I'll run erosion drainage section by as well. All right. The next few here like smoke, dust, another particulate matter, pollution, noise, vibration. These are all pretty straightforward, just little minimal things. The city code did have a section in there that addressed all this. And if I think it's on the next page. That's talking about waste. I thought I had it in and crossed out somewhere, but it literally had everything within like one little sentence. So what I did is I just kind of broke them out. Reference the current, you know, state statute sections or MPCA sections or whatever. So basically we do have the right to regulate this stuff. And rather than the city putting in their own specific code for every little item, kind of reference off the state statutes and things like that. Noise, you can see where we just kind of updated the language there. Glare, I, I got that taken out. But that also is kind of being addressed in the previous exterior lighting section. So and that's where, you know, once again, we're trying to be consistent, get everything in the correct area. Vibration, you know, obviously there's Minnesota's MPCA rules for that. Residual features, this is one that basically talked about a lot of that stuff. That's what I think it was. Noise, odor, toxic fumes, gases, dust, smoke. So I kind of took that residual features existing section and made these other three or five or six sections, basically. Bulk storage of liquid. This is basically all used to sort of stated with bulk storage of gas, fertilizer, chemicals, you know, whatever. Shall meet state, county or federal requirements from those respective agencies stating uses and compliance. I don't think we have a ton of that going on in mayor, but there are obviously industrial areas in cities that have that situation. The waste material section here just talks about waste shall be disposed in a manner consistent with MPCA rules. Any accumulation, you know, on the premise should not be stored or not stored in containers which comply with Minnesota Pollution Control Agency rules. Or the accumulation of mixed municipal solid waste generated has remained there for more than one week. Just kind of goes through all this stuff, talks about it. Shall be abated, you know, cost of the abatement may be assessed, nuisance is found, you know, to the property where the nuisance is found. Accumulation, storage, processing, disposal waste on any premise which is not generated and that premise is prohibited. So we don't want to be bringing waste from a different site and start stockpiling somewhere somewhere else. And then you can see that's the section. We had a section in there that was already exist and we kind of just updated the language, added a little bit more to it. Added this one with explosives.
Real quick on the waste side.
Yeah.
When we talk about waste, you know, zoning ordinance, how does that differentiate from other parts of the city code where we talk about solid waste? Dumpsters, trash cans, things of that nature, making sure you're.
It does differentiate, but it does, it's kind of the same thing, but it does differentiate. This doesn't have the, the detail, I would assume, like that other stuff, the other section of the chapter has. So it's just given a little bit regarding the waste material and it kind of fits in with these other items, you know, that we're dealing with. So you know, that's one thing when we're all said and done, we kind of got to go through this when it's all done and make sure there aren't conflicts and we have to, there might be somewhere else in the code that we have to address. You know, maybe a section has to be referenced differently or whatever. So that's kind of a step that, you know, we're just kind of getting through the general text right now, but all that gets looked at. I should ask, is a city, is a city attorney eventually going to look through all this, you know, but at the end or how are they, what's the plan with that?
Haven't given a look at the very end. Once we ever be, get everything polished up.
Yeah, I'm sure there'll be a couple of things he says this is this or that or whatever it always is, but you know, so. Okay. The explosive section is just basically requiring storage, any use requiring the storage utilization or manufacturing of products which could decompose by detonation shall be located not less than a thousand feet from any residential district. This standard shall not apply to storage. And this is existing language, by the way, just so you know. So, you know, basically that's there. Radiation, electrical emissions. We kind of talked about that as well. So just want to make sure that that's got some general language. Traffic control. Basically what this is talking about is, you know, we have some stuff in there already. Letter A where it talks about it's it won't contribute to congestion on public streets, safety hazards, excessive traffic through residential areas. You know, basically, you know, trafficking out of commercial industrial. I added institutional uses. That's, you know, the school district or the mayor Lutheran School probably gets as much traffic as any place in this city. So we added that in there. No backing onto streets or pedestrian ways. So you're not backing out onto trunk highway twenty five if we can prevent that. And then also it talks about no access drive should be located thirty feet of any two intersecting street right of ways. I took that out. It will be added back in when we deal with the driveway off-street parking. That that's where we'll have a lot of specifics on those. So there's no point in having one little clause here when the rest of it's all be talked about somewhere else. So screening, screening obstruction of view. And this may be approved by the city administrator and except for a governmental agency for the purpose of screen, no wall fence structure, trees, shrub, vegetation, or anything else shall be placed or extended into a yard or right of way area. So as to pose a danger to traffic by obscuring the view approaching vehicle or traffic or pedestrians from any street or driveway. So basically we're trying to limit a wall that's blocking everybody's view. That also, and somebody could walk right out and be right in the lane of traffic or something like that. So and then we talk about the traffic and sight visibility triangle. I have a little drawing there that kind of shows this. Basically at any street or driveway center line, we want to make sure there's a little sight line or sight triangle. So when you pull up, you know, you're not trying to look down the street and you can't see until you're inching out into that lane. You want to have that clear view. So you can see people coming or other traffic coming from the other road.
Second street, third street and fourth street.
Yeah, there's probably a few of them. And the funny thing is in, in, you know, like downtown districts, you got the big buildings are typically right up in the corner. So
Terrible.
Yeah. So there is some of it that does, you know, allow for that, but this is you know, trying to prevent that. Like when the Dollar General went through there, you know, obviously we make sure that they don't have, you know, a bunch of trees or shrubs right in that.
Especially if the bards are busy and there's cars too. You're like, okay, we're gonna go.
Yeah. So basically it talks about the, the distances and, you know, what you gotta do there and how that works. And I did have under exceptions on the next page that, you know, if you got, you know, little bushes that are, you know, this tall flowers, you know, three feet, that's allowed, you know, it's not, we're trying to try to prevent that. And then properties in the downtown business district are exempt as well, just because there's no setbacks in that district. So the next one's the, the wetland protection and management. And this is some existing language that we have. And basically you do want to, you know, look at wetlands. When you have new developments, we're not just, you know, plowing them under and whatever. You gotta go through that process. City does have a wetland consultant. And it talks about, you know, impacts of wetland, there's protective buffers. Trails and sidewalks are, you know, in this case probably trails. If you have a wetland buffer on a wetland in the back of a development, the city does have the right to put a trail through there if it's considered open space or an outlot. And that's pretty common in a lot of cities. They allow that buffer to have that trail. Buffer is actually not the wetland itself. It's a protective buffer that's upland. So to have that trail there, we're not actually filling the wetland. Outlot plat. And I have a couple of these. I don't know if you noticed their highlighter. Yeah, you can see that. These are the items here that, you know, these are things we all want to just check before we do a final version. But for now, we have this in there. And I put in there an exception on property owned by the city mayor shall be exempt from establishing an outlot or conservation easement for required buffer areas. And what this means is if the city has a property, there's no point to the city plotting a separate property just to protect the wetland if they own the property because the city's going to protect it anyways. So, you know, planning can get expensive enough. City has to have the city engineer do this. It's going to cost money. So we're giving some exceptions there. Then the outlot plat, the reason I have this is letter B. It says it shall be plotted as an outlot if established as part of a subdivision application. All other applications shall require dedication to conservation easement. So we've had this kind of go both ways in the past and Coldwater Crossing in the initial four or five phases, they had outlots, the ponds, I guess I should say, where we plotted the lot lines through the middle. Now, in the last few, we've plotted the ponds in an outlot that the city takes ownership of. It can be done either way. And I know the city, the city kind of changed its course as some of them came forward. So I have this highlighted. I just want to have a discussion on that. Either way will work. Don't get me wrong. So I just want to say, do we want to actually restrict it one way or the other? Or does the city just want to leave that option open? And to me, I think it can go either way. It can work either way. It's just depends on what the city wants to do, I guess. Every city is a little different in that direction.
Yeah, I guess my, my preference is I like how we did it with the seventh edition. You carve out, you carve out the storm pond. I think it's deeded over the city. And then we can control it. At least in my mind now that a different city administrator might think differently, but those storm ponds, when I look at them are no different than a manhole. They're no different than a water main. They're no different than our water tower. Those are utility structures to me. Yeah, grass grows around them and whatnot and might get fish in it, but it's a utility structure first and foremost in my mind. So that also helps. We get, we, you get residents who will say, well, my property line extends all the way out there. That's my pond. I can do whatever I want with it. By having that all deeded over the city, you eliminate all of that. And then I have to go back and say, yeah, it does, but because that's our utility, we get to do certain things in that. By having it carved out, the city just cleans all of that up. If anybody throws a dock in there or tries to, we can say, nope, that's city property. You don't get to put one in there because it's a it's a storm utility first and foremost. It's not a play feature.
Yeah. And just to follow up on that, the ones that have the lot lines running through the pond, the city does have a drained utilities been over all those ponds. The city has the right to legally go in there and clean that pond out or do whatever it needs to do. And what we found is, like you said, is people tend to think it's theirs and they're also putting docks or who knows what.
A little more fill.
Yeah, a little more fill or they're, they're mowing right up to the edge or whatever. If they don't own it, they tend to stay out of that area and it's, it's an easier way to do it. And then and the city has the right to use that and do how they want. So but like I said, every city is a little different that way. Some cities don't care either way. Some cities like, I know the city of Lakeville is diehard. It has to be an outlot. Everything is done in an outlot. I mean, I bet they own thousands and thousands of little outlots and all these ponds and different things all over the place. So I know, so you like Prior Lake, I know, for instance, they, they'll go either way depending on the situation. They don't really care. So.
But like, like you said, you have drainage utility easements, but most people don't look at that.
Yeah.
They look at property lines. That's what, even though you point out here's your drainage utility easement, they go, what's that? Everybody understands the property line. Fewer people understand those drainage utility easement. So it alleviates a lot of that.
Maybe I'll just put in there. We'll leave the language as is, but just add a little term about unless otherwise approved by the city engineer. Cause that does give the city, you know, the option or the flexibility if there's a specific situation where it just makes sense. You know, maybe there's a big chunk of land on the other side of the pond that's part of the owner. I don't know. But you know, it, I don't want to be the so hard line that it's just this way or there's no other options. I want to at least have a little flexibility there because I do think there's always a situation where it probably does make sense, but I'm, I'm also a guy, I think the outlot is the way to go. But.
Yeah. You need flexibility just in case of an exigent circumstance, for sure.
And we're giving the city the ability to be flexible on their own property. You know, we're not requiring the city to do it, but the city owns it already. So.
Mental note for you. Oh, we got it. One issue we do have is when we do future developments, we need a good access point to access the storm pond.
Yeah.
Cause if we're going to go there and dredge it, we need at least twenty feet of space to get equipment in there, do the work and then get out. With everybody throwing up fences and things like that. Some of these are inaccessible.
Right.
If I have to dredge it.
You're going through a yard.
Oh, there's going to be a couple angry property owners.
It's not like you're not going to fix it, right?
Well, the city would fix it, but they're not required to necessarily fix irrigation or fences.
Well, right.
But.
But I think in an act of good faith, if they would agree to it, I think we would be more agreeable.
I definitely, but it's still a conflict.
Right. Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Like, guess, I come up to both of you. It's like you guys are neighbors. All right, we have to get to the storm pond and dredge it. We're about on, you know, two months from now, we're coming in, we're tearing out your fence, ripping up your yard and you guys are very particular about those things. So now you're just pitching a fit.
Are you going to stain the fence again when it's new?
Cause I'm not, no.
And match the staining.
We, when we do these developments, if we can allocate space where that's where we get in to do this work, whether through easement or something else, we designate these lanes that this, these are maintenance pathways to get to the storm pond.
Yeah.
Didn't we keep the lots out of the water a long time ago?
Yeah. I mean, when I first got here, that wasn't being done, but it kind of switched over, I would say about eight, ten years ago, maybe somewhere in there. I know the seventh edition is the first one I remember did it. And then the, there are two replanted phase, or them two last phases, the Hidden Creek did that as well. So.
Does that sliver of pond count towards your property taxes or is it only buildable land? So could they be marginal?
That's something you need to talk to the county assessor about. It shouldn't. It should be based on kind of the usable area of your lot, but I don't know if the assessors always look at that, look at it that way. They try to get as much out as you can typically.
One additional benefit to the new homeowner, potentially, which is be
Yeah, I don't.
Eliminating the unusable piece from there.
It shouldn't really affect that, but it'd be a situation a little different on that. So it's hard to say, but.
Yeah, they're just looking at your acreage or whatever.
Yeah. That sometimes what they do and it's like, wait a minute here, you know, I got, I got one acre, but I only got ten thousand square feet that's actually usable. But anyways, you know, back to the access to the pond, there's different ways of doing that too. Some cities require a twenty foot corridor. That's part of the outlaw to the pond. Some people will allow the, the access or drainage utilities with down a side property line. So somebody owns it. You can sod it, put irrigation in there, but it gives them the ability. I've even seen some cities where they'll put like a class five base down and then they can put like four inches of dirt and sod over that base. So it's not, you know, if they do drive back there, it's not going to completely run everything up. And, you know, it, it, some cities will allow fences in there, some don't. Most cities don't. I know there's, I dealt with this a few years ago, about three years ago. They had a twenty foot wide thing and he goes, I want to put a fence and I'll give a gate, a big open gate. Alls he gotta do is open it and close it. And the city in that case wouldn't even allow that, even if they had the key to the gate to get in there. And, you know, owner wasn't happy, but he bought annoying going into that. And, you know, he's trying to get something, but that, that was one where I thought they probably could have let it go with what he was, he was, it was going to be a nice gate and fence and, but it's.
I'd accept the gate.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it just depends, you know, they're like, if we allow it here, then we allow it everywhere and it is, they want to open that can of worms, you know, so.
As long as I would allow a gate, as long as we got the agreement that yes, we can enter exit as we need to, we got that twenty feet or whatever that we can get in there. Cause like some of these ponds, we can't.
Yeah, it's pretty tight on some of them. The other thing is a lot of these, if you can, you know, in future developments, you try to get ponds that are adjacent to you know, a public roadway. So you can come right off the street for really.
Right. Like the southern ponds there along twenty five or thirty there.
It's nice to have them in the backyards, you know, it's kind of an amenity thing for them houses, but you know, from access from the city, it's not ideal always. Let's see how it's set up.
What it, so two neighboring side lots, what is the combined utility easement, ten feet?
A standard one is five and five, so ten total. But if you have a big, you know, piece of equipment going back there, that's probably not enough. You typically are going to need about twenty feet.
I think the, what you're proposing, just like requiring the outlot to include a twenty foot strip sounds, I mean, the most convenient. Is there, would there, otherwise there'll be an option where like maybe more complicated language, but to require the builder to designate two lots that have kind of like, like you have the emergency exit on a plane.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for is when they do the planning, this is it. This is where you go to access it. The reason being is even though we have five foot drainage utility easements, people put fences on property lines. They put fences here, put fences there, two feet off. There's a lot of that going on. We allow them within there because our fencing is according to the property line. The drainage and utility easement. So dedicating whatever that may look like. I don't have the solution, but.
Yeah. So like, for instance, this pond here, you know, it's surrounded by all these lots. And I don't know exactly where it is, but somewhere this, the, the storm sewer system on these streets has storm sewer that drains this pond, whether it's down here or down there. Those, that storm sewer line that does run down a lot line somewhere is typically where you may want to do that because it gives you the ability. You already have an extra wide easement there because those storm sewer lines, you already take an extra ten feet. So it'd be a ten and ten. So, you know, if this is the line here, these lots adjacent to it typically are a little bit. So, you know, if this is the line here, these lots adjacent to it typically are a little bit wider because they have the extra drained utility easement. And what you want to do when you design it is try to find an area where you can say, all right, we already have extra wide utility easement there. We can also make this the actual access location and designate that on the original plat. So anyone that buys these houses. Should have a, you know, some sort of disclosure or notice or whatever in place that they're aware of that down the road. Hey, you're buying this. That someday the city might come in here, clean this pond out and go from there. Now, the big thing that we have with the city is, you know, this is an old development is designed years ago. These ponds, the city to come in here, they're going down these back lot lines all the way along here. And some of these yards that we know in like the uh hidden creek in the initial phases, they're right up on them ponds. There's not a lot of space there. So as we develop these in in newer phases, there's going to be more room given in these backyards as well. That has more of a usable backyard. At one point, I think the city even. Adjusted the setback to like fifty feet or something like that on on the R one district, which really wasn't the issue. It was design of how the ponds were fitting in with the lots. And all that. So it's kind of a design thing. And, you know, I do a ton of this type of development where if you do it right, you have room, you have a nice usable backyard. And then the city has the ability to get back into these ponds and clean them up. Now. The other thing, this type of stuff that we're talking about is really not a zoning ordinance thing. It's a subdivision ordinance item. So, you know, we kind of, some of this kind of crosses over a little, but the details we're talking about right now should not be in the zoning order, should be in the subdivision ordinance. So. You know, I got a note down that, you know, we we've talked about this in years past and other projects. And I know it's come up when they, because you can see some of these. Extend in and this phase, it's an outlot. So half of these ponds, here's the other thing I just dealt with last winter. And this is where, you know, people own the ponds like this. And in one case, this guy in the pond house, he had his line went all the way across. Well, the guy living here owned part of it. Well, his kids went out and made a sky, a ice rink across the technical line. He says, that's my line. You can't be out there. And the city, you know, in this case, the city didn't want any, it's just like, come on, let the kids out there, you know, they're crossing the lines, ice skating. And he's like, well, what if they fall? I'm going to get sued, you know, and it's so. Eventually the city attorney said, because this is considered drainage utilities, when it was the liability wasn't there in the property owner. Now. I'm not an attorney to know, but things like that come up as well, where this guy didn't want the kids crossing the broad line on the pond, ice skating in the middle. You know, what if a kid goes out here in a canoe and canoes across to fish, you know, you're crossing technically property lines, but you know, it's, it's, it's just, it's always things to talk about. So.
And the eighth edition, I like the focus is, uh, when I think about getting an access, I like how this is done. These tend to be bigger lot, uh, bigger backyards.
Yep.
So right here is a natural area. So when you do planning and design.
I was just going to say, if you zoom back in on the street, you can actually see here's the catch basins right here.
Yep.
And they come from these intersections. There's a pipe that comes across and then runs there. And I think it runs there. And this is the outlet that goes into this pond right there. And see, there's a dock actually. Yeah. But yeah, that's, that's what they, you know, it runs down there. It's, it's nice to be able to do it on the rear yard, run along that way versus the side lot lines because rear yard's got a lot more space to work with. So. So that's ideally, if you can make it work, that that that's what you want to do. So.
Yeah.
Anyways, and then the the last item and I have highlighted there under this wetland is the building setback. And this is a setback to the buffer line. I I got ten feet in. I do have this highlighted. Um, twenty feet to the rear shall be provided the edge of all required wetland buffers at the time of development. And a building setback on the ten of side yard. So what that's saying is if you have a wetland line. And you have a buffer, you have to be set back from the buffer. So you can't build your house one foot off the edge of the wetland. It has to be off the buffer. Which gives a little bit of space to a wetland. Now, this isn't a stormwater pond like these are. This is the actual wetland. And this is something I do need to check with, you know, city engineer on what's, you know, we don't really have a wetland management. Plan per se for the city. So if we come up with something here, we want to make sure it's the correct dimensions. And, you know, if you, if you make it ten or twenty or, you know, some cities I see are forty or fifty. Well, that means you're just taking up, you know, buildable area on these lots. So, you know, ten, twenty there works for me, but I got to see what city engineer says. And then you can see we did have some language in there that's already there. And we're just kind of updating some of that actually references the nineteen ninety one conservation act. I think there was an update. I can't remember the year. So it's not even referencing the most. Up to date, you know, conservation, my conservation act. Um, then lot maintenance. Um, I got in there, moved another section of city code, surface water management. Um, and I say city code, that's not even zoning ordinance. It's it's part of the city code. So these, these items in here like lot maintenance for mowing, obviously we have a yard. Thing about mowing lawns, it's not in the zoning ordinance, but yet in the zoning ordinance now we have maintenance regarding that, you know, it's so. This section of zoning ordinance potentially conflicts with another section of the city code, same with the surface water management. You know, that should go into the storm or the subdivision ordinance. And so we just want to make sure we're getting all our sections moved to the correct locations. So it's nice to have it there, but you know, when there are two different sections, somebody might read this and not even realize there's another section somewhere. Because you want to think to look and then you miss, might miss something that's important. So. So with that being said, that's all I really have with this section. It's obviously the performance intersection got, you know, narrowed down a little bit, but. We're kind of truly getting the performance items into this section. And like I said, the general regulations is where a lot of these other items go to. And this is, there's a lot of stuff there, you know, like I said, I'll see how I break it up, which ones I'll try to get. So we're going to have two even meetings with discussion, but. I think in the next two sections, there'll definitely be some uh discussion on it. And then uh, let's see here. And then we got after the general regulations, then we get into the zoning districts and the zoning map discussion. That'll be another couple of meetings. And that's where we'll kind of go through all the districts. We'll talk about lot sizes, setbacks. Um, and then, you know, from a zoning map standpoint, which is the map on the wall behind you there, uh, is the zoning correct? Within the city, do we want to change any areas within the city? Now, we won't change zoning districts right off the bat. You know, once we get this approved. We can come back and do like a citywide rezoning if we feel we need to go there. Um, I don't really think there's much to probably change. We are going to look at adding the I want industrial, just true industrial district, but. I don't know if the property is ready for that, like the Winkmeyer property, you know, southeast of town there. That's probably one that has some of that zoning, but until they're technically annexed. You know, we don't need to give that designation. Um, there's some lots kind of um, south of the the, you know, south of this area, south of the elementary school and church over here that. Maybe we go from R one to R two. Um, there's a couple of blocks there. Other than that, I don't think there's a ton to probably look at, to be honest with you. But that's, that's up to you guys to discuss at that time and we'll worry about that at a later date. So. So, yeah. Any questions on these things or we're good here?
I think we're good. Um, next meeting Tuesday, July first.
That's July fourth week. Is there going to be enough forum and everything or?
We're about to find out.
I mean, I'm here.
Yeah, I think the second, so I'll be.
I'll be here.
I'm here for the earlier part of that week.
I'll be here.
Yes.
Those are all promises.
Is that a no hurry else from Tom?
Not sure.
We could trade the other two.
We'll be here, I'm sure.
I'm sure we're not too many. So does that make the fourth one?
Fourth is our Friday.
Friday? Yeah. It'd be Thursday and I'd be out here.
Commissioners report?
Anyone?
I've been out of a loop for a couple of months.
Store should be up in two weeks. Well, they won't be able to pack for another three years.
If you want to leave them here, certainly can take them.
I don't think I know the everything's planned.
Never know.
All right, next item is adjournment.
Motion.
Seeking a motion in a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.